Good evening, everyone. It is Iowa City City Council's former agenda and regular former meetings. It is May 2025 at 6:05. We're going to start the meeting and call the meeting on order.
We need a roll call, sir?
Yes, roll call, sorry.
Alter. Bergis.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Sala.
Yeah, here.
Teague.
He's online.
Wyline.
Here.
Normally, we're looking for a verbal response from folks who are online. Mayor, can you hear us?
You are muted, Mayor. He's still muted. Now he's unmuted.
Mayor?
Do you hear us, Mayor?
I don't think he can hear us.
Okay.
I'll text him.
Are there rules preventing us to start without the...
We have a coram, yeah, but we just want to make sure.
Sure, we can do either. We could move forward with the proclamations, those aren't votes, of course, or we can wait for the mayor to make sure we get him on whatever the presiding officer's preference is. That's Mayor Bruton.
Okay, sure. I think we can...
Hello, can you all hear me wave your hands?
Yes, we can now, thank you.
I cannot hear you.
Yes, we are doing roll call.
Did he just... I'm sorry, Mayor, did you just say you cannot hear us?
No, I can.
Oh, great.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Second item is proclamations, and this is National Gun Violence Awareness Day, whereas every day 125 people in the United States are killed by gun violence and more than 260 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 19,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Iowa has an average of 343 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 10.7 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state 4.2 billion each year, of which 53 million is paid by taxpayers. Iowa has the 42nd highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas support for Second Amendment right of law-abiding resident goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from those who are dangerous to themselves or others. And whereas elected official and law enforcement officer, in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources, know their communities best and the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it. And are best positioned to understand how to keep their community members safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see gun violence continue to impact communities across the country. And whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Ben-Delton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 6, 2025, to recognize the 28th birthday of Hadiya, born June 2, 1997. People across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in the profit to hide Hadiya and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hand of people who should not have access to them and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now, therefore, I am Zaher Saleh, the Mayor Bruton, in behalf of Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, due hereby Brooklyn Min, the first Friday in June, which is June 6, 2025, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Iowa City and encourage all residents to support their local communities offered to prevent the tragic effect of gun violence and honor a value of human rights, of human lives. Thank you. Here to present, to accept this current green...
Thank you so much. I'm proud to accept this proclamation from you. And just to reiterate that Friday, June 6, is officially Gun Violence Awareness Day, and it's celebrated through the weekend. And that day and the weekend are dedicated to raising awareness about gun violence. And this weekend also honors the countless lives taken by gun violence. Firearms are the leading cause of death for American children and teens. We can do better to prevent senseless acts of gun violence by promoting common sense gun safety. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jess Lang with Johnson County CVI. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your continued support and partnership. And also wanted to thank you also for the resources that the Iowa City Police Department is continually providing the CVI program. We've had a very busy couple of years, and we're getting ready to head into our third year with quite a bit of success and organization. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item three is consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda, item 3 to 7, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Harmson.
Moved by Mo, second by Harmson. Public discussion. Is anyone in the public would like to discuss anything on the consent agenda? If not, council discussion. Okay, roll call, please.
Bergis.
Yes.
Harmson.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Wyline.
Yes.
Okay, motion basis 6 to 0. Now, we're going to go to item number eight is community comment. Only in person comment will be allowed for community comment. Public comment for a specific agenda item, which must be directly related to the agenda item, may be made in person or remotely. Any public comment?
Good evening. My name is Martha Norbeck. Some of you may know me as the Green Architect, who comes talks to you a lot. I would like to talk to you this evening about 21 South Lynn. I was surprised, as maybe many of you were, to go from three to one proposal in a pretty short order. I am very excited about the Graham Rell proposal. I think it has a lot of really good components to it. Committing to full building electrification, affordable housing, the mixed use, solar panels proposed for the roof. I mean, there's a lot of good things about this proposal. I'm concerned, however, this process kind of, after very methodically going through public connection, now we've done multiple work sessions, and now we're here. And in the last work section, it was sort of like, hey, tell us, you know, what do you want to make sure is in this contract? And we're just going to proceed with the contract. And it just felt like we got this little hiccup, like we didn't get a public engagement to the actual proposals. And I think there's a lot, as I said, there's a lot of really good things to talk about. And I'm thrilled they're not asking for TIF, but at the same time, they are asking for a $1.5 million discount on the property, which is not insignificant. And I think there is some room for accountability of talking about the city values. Despite all the assertions of the things that are going to be done from a sustainability standpoint, there is no language in the proposal that says we are going to hold ourselves accountable to our goals in these ways. There is nothing that says we're going to do an energy model to demonstrate we've exceeded the energy code by 25%. There is no target of we're going to reduce our embodied carbon by 10 to 15%. There is no commitment to we're actually going to calculate our water use reduction. So these are things that are important to the sustainability that were baked into that conversation we had last summer about the TIF proposal. And I understand they're not asking for TIF, so your leverage is different. But it's still $1.5 million. And so I would love to see a lead commitment. And I realize that as a lead consultant, it sounds like I have a vested interest in this, but I can tell you that OPM definitely won't hire me to do the lead consulting on this project. They are perfectly capable of doing this themselves. And the reason the lead is important is because it's a third party checking these things. And I am able to use that leverage as a lead consultant to communicate with the client. You can change this way and this way and tug and tug and pull and pull. And these were the goals you said when things were glorious three months ago. And now it's hard, but how do we still get the goal you set three months ago? So I urge you to evaluate that and hopefully open up for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Sharon DeGraw. I have a small request that I think can add up to be meaningful, which is in a discussion last Friday about affordable housing, one person asked if the money that, when there's money in an account for affordable and low-income housing that the city has set aside, when that money accrues interest, where does that interest money go? I believe it should go back into the account and be applied for low-income and affordable housing projects, rather than be allocated for something else that the city might like to do. And so I guess my request is, would there be five council members that would approve or initiate the process to talk about that and get that going? That's it, thank you.
Anyone else?
I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. This is for what's not on the agenda, right?
What's not on the agenda, yeah.
Okay. Well, my thing... My name is Mary Gravitt. And I'm here for my neighbors. In order to punish the tenant, our landlord is taking away our laundry. And he sent us two emails. The first email stated that the tenants, which Keystone had evicted the prior week, had come back and robbed the laundry over there, their washer and their dryer. And they told us, as the tenants in the next building, to look out for him. The second email stated that our former neighbor had come back, robbed and vandalized our washers and dryers. And as a result of this, he was going to remove our appliances, our washer and dryer, and close the laundry down. And we'll be without laundry service. And the robberies would not occur if he hadn't used electronic tokens or swipe card. And we complained about this. And the emails also stated how these robberies had been occurring. He said, the email said, I don't know, I know who wrote it, but I'm saying the email said, from Keystone, that a tenant had been propping open the door with stones. And in the case of my building, using the loose doormats for this purpose. And thousands of dollars were spent on locks. In the case of my building, which is a twin to the neighboring building, first, the insulation of the locks, they put two, we have three entrances, they put two locks on three entrances. So that when I asked them and told them this was not enough, they told me they didn't have enough money for the third lock, and the tenants had to wait. And in the meantime, despite the warnings posted by Keystone, the land, some of the tenants and their guests still coming to our building using the mats to prop the doors open. And I have, all the tenants, older tenants, we have complained about this. And Keystone won't pay us any attention. So then there's people that come and run through the building, loud people, people smoking marijuana. We complain, nothing is done. And even the tenants are afraid to call the police. They said the police won't pay them any attention. But as a result of all of Keystone's inaction, we're going to lose our laundry. And we need our laundry, because we live on the east side. There's no public laundry there, except in other apartment buildings. And so I think something should be done. We shouldn't be punished. We're paying our rent, and we're doing everything that tenants should do. And this is why I complained to Keystone. And like I said, the tenants are afraid to call the police, people running through the building. And it took me a long time to get the locks on the doors. But with the mats still there, they just prop the door open, walk in, walk out. They don't pay rent. Why should we have to subsidize people who are criminals coming in and, you know, just coming in, causing trouble for us?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, I think we're going to go to item... Do we close the public comment?
No, you're ready to go to 9A. I was just lowering my microphone because it's my understanding that Counselor Alter has joined the meeting electronically. I'm just looking for verbal confirmation from her for that.
Counsel Alter, are you there?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Now we can, yeah.
Thank you. It took me a moment to unmute.
No, no problem. Okay, I think we're going to go to item number 10A.
9A.
9A, I'm sorry. Okay. Res zoning of North Governor Street. An ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 5.49 acres of property located between North Dodge and North Governor Street for a medium-density single-family residential zone, high-density single-family residential zone, medium-density multifamily residential zone, and multifamily residential zone to high-density single-family residential zone with a planning development overlay for approximately 0.17 acres, and to medium-density multifamily residential zone with a planned development overlay for approximately 5.32 acres. And this is our second consideration. May I have a motion to give second consideration?
So moved, Mo.
Moved by Mo.
Second, Bergis.
Second by Bergis. Public discussion. Anyone in the public would like to address this?
Good evening, councilors. I'm Audrey Barick from Iowa City. I want to acknowledge that the City Council has been working hard on a difficult rezoning application, yet there are problematic aspects of the process so far. Council is moving forward toward approval without having acknowledged, let alone discussed, several major issues brought by the neighborhood, detailed in both correspondence and in public presentations. Lest you believe the neighborhood consists of myself and only a few neighbors. As stated by planning and zoning, it should be noted the neighborhood has overwhelmingly signed protest petitions and entrusted myself and Sharon DeGraw to be representing them. They are attending to their jobs and lives, but if angry villagers wielding pitchforks is what is needed here, and that's a metaphor, not a threat, we can make that happen. City Council has stated the applicant should reasonably expect the road to approval to be smooth and nearly automatic when P&amp;Z have approved. They state it would be inappropriate not to approve if an applicant has checked all the boxes. But P&amp;Z misrepresented and minimized our concerns in the consultation with council and in stating the approval process and in stating the approval process should be nearly automatic. Council has overlooked that there may be protest petitions coming in in the meantime, leaving no room for the protest petitions to matter. These petitions should influence your decision-making heavily. Do you see what has happened? If P&amp;Z has not listened accurately to the community, but council should approve smoothly if they approve, who is responsible for answering to the community? The process is circular. The city received 26 petitions specifically protesting the loss of transitional zoning by the inclusion of 900 North Dodge Street. Whether these separate petitions have legal standing or not, the neighborhood has chosen to underscore their high level of concern by speaking out in this way, and the neighborhood deserves to be heard. Citizens should be able to trust in the comprehensive plan and the zoning code such that when they buy a single-family home insulated on both sides by single-family zoning, a large apartment complex cannot be built immediately next door at the whim of a developer. Though so far has been no acknowledgement of the loss of transitional zoning due to the inclusion of 900 North Dodge in the OPD. In fact, the opposite is true in my correspondence with the city attorney and with senior planner. Both have denied the reality of the loss of transitional zoning. What is it that we're not understanding about upzoning to RM20 and the building rights now and in the future that come with that designation? And Sharon DeGraw will continue.
All right. The letters from Audrey, I'm continuing it, and I've put my name in the basket. Given the city as co-applicant, transparency in your process should be a high priority. It should be exemplary. Yet, the staff report obfuscates the purpose of including 900 North Dodge, which is solely to create unused density, which can be transferred to 84 units on the 911 property a block away. The report only hints that this is so. In stating that as a condition of the upzoning to the RM20, it will be converted to a single unit to comply with density requirements. Rezoning 900 North Dodge Street sets a bad precedent, undermines public trust, and should be removed from the OPD. With the city as co-applicant, planning and zoning would have been under pressure to approve and did so. Planning and zoning appeared to have approved the rezoning without having digested the major concerns raised by the community. In the May 6 City Council consultation, planning and zoning inaccurately reported a chief concern of the neighborhood as being traffic, and then dismissed that this with development brings increased traffic. The actual neighborhood concern here is safety for both drivers and pedestrians and the lack of infrastructure to support safety. Bringing such a large development to this land, island, situated between north and south one-way streets with aggressive double-lane traffic, no crosswalks, and no safe pedestrian route out is to entrench and exacerbate already unsafe conditions for 100-plus new residents. A concern of the neighborhood, clearly articulated in correspondence and oral presentations, is lack of pedestrian safety and lack of infrastructure to support the increased density. Access to public transportation or to highway from the development requires jaywalking across the two lanes of aggressive Highway 1 traffic at a point of low visibility for drivers. Access to man, school requires the same or cutting through the woods without a designated path. It is inappropriate to press forward with development without addressing these inadequacies that likely rise to the level of illegalities. I believe ADA requires new development to provide access to the public transportation and zoning code specifications. Specifics, oops, development occur where there is infrastructure to support it. I can see that I have 10 seconds. I urge the council not to move forward with approval. You could improve the process with accuracy systematically reflecting hearing, community concerns with collaboration with an urban planner, and address the complexities of safety, infrastructure, and density.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address? Yeah, go ahead.
Before we listen to anybody, I'm so sorry. We're getting weird feedback from the iPad here, and it's really hard to, like, I'm trying to mute it myself, but it keeps unmuting itself. I'm not sure. I can hear everything twice from the... Okay. I'm not the only one, I'm not crazy.
I'm hearing it too.
Yeah, no, no. It is. I try to... Normally, we go yes, yeah, and make it like not, but it gives us this option. I don't know why. We should just like do this and...
Okay. That's good. I think we just need to talk so we can hear if it's working or not.
It sounds like maybe that's better?
That's better, yeah. And I just want to make sure the mayor is hearing us and also Counsel Alter.
It can hear you. It does show that the host is, mic is on, the Iowa City host.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to turn off, but then it would just turn itself back on.
When it's muted, we can't hear you. When the host mic is muted, we can't hear you.
Thank you.
But now it's a problem.
Can you hear us now, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I think we can...
Yep.
We can look at that.
And Megan, you can hear us, Megan?
Yes, I can.
All right, great.
Thanks for...
All right, I think, yeah, come to the... Welcome.
Hi, my name is Mark Rolkey, and my family brought the property on 1018 North Governor Street way back in 1974 when I was six years old. So I've lived on the north side of Iowa City for well over half a century now for most of my life. Governor Street used to be pretty calm back in the '70s and '80s, but the traffic has only immensely increased. I think it'd be an epic failure for traffic and for public safety to put 80 or plus more units there in that property. What I don't quite understand is, we went through this process, I want to say about eight or nine years ago, and we denied the zoning for, I think it was, two 24-unit spaces there. Now, the property owner's come back seven, eight years later and has doubled the size of the space he wants to put in. If it wasn't safe then, why would we approve it now? I don't know how familiar you guys are with North Governor Street. On the east side, there is a sidewalk. On the west side, there is no sidewalk. They would have to then, for safety, add sidewalks all the way up the west side, all the way to the top of the hill there, which would be very, very impractical. I just don't see how at all it'd be pedestrian safe to add that many more people to that neighborhood. I mean, I realize the community is growing, but I don't understand the justification for those larger buildings there when we already have on North Dubuque Street new buildings going in, across from the Dairy Queen, new spaces going in. I don't understand the drive for that much need. And we already once decided not to rezon that property about 10 years ago. So I don't understand why we'd go back on that rezoning and try to actually increase the size of it. You know, take away the community sense that has been in that neighborhood for 50 years. And many of these neighbors, I know, couldn't make it down tonight. I actually don't even know these individuals here, but it just, it just seems like a huge step backwards. I mean, I think we all would have gladly accepted a couple, eight complex units there, which was initially proposed 10 years ago, which would have been a third the size. I just, you know, I think it'd cringe on the park. I mean, directly below me, the next two properties are Habitat for Humanity Homes that have about eight to 10 children that live there. Increasing that, the traffic on that bend that comes up and down is just dangerous. I mean, there's accidents there every two or three weeks, it seems like, when people are coming screaming down that hill. are coming screaming down that hill, because they do scream down that hill, and it's, it just makes no sense. I would, I would hope we have more common sense amongst our elected officials. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address this matter? Okay, yes, come forward to the podium.
Hello, I'm Sandy Berto, and I live and own 911 North Dodge and 913 North Dodge. Part of the reason we bought our home in the north side neighborhood was for the uniqueness, the character of the older homes. I wish we could have had a house on Brown Street, because I love those big beloved homes with the big trees, but at 911 North Dodge, we're doing all we can to make the neighborhood more beautiful and welcoming to the people who, a lot of times, scream down North Dodge. I'm really concerned about the safety of the pedestrians that go down Dodge, and then if they're crossing across the park area to get to North Dodge, then they still have to cross that. What's it gonna take, somebody to be seriously hurt or worse? I'd also like to say, we wholeheartedly agree with the letter that was just presented by Audrey and Sharon. They have been our voice when we couldn't have attended, and I think if you look at the 26 petitions that have been offered, that there are more than just Audrey and Sharon who have come to be our voice. I really like to have you consider, again, the zoning on this, on this property, because it's gonna affect the North Dodge and North neighborhood, neighborhood for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, yeah. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Anna Bladel, and I will sign in. I confess that I feel fairly inadequately prepared to speak to y'all, but I am living in the house on Brown and Lucas that my great-grandfather, a Czech immigrant here, built. He was one of the bricklayers, who was part of bricking Brown Street. And I am only able to afford to live in that neighborhood in all honesty because of the family house there. I am a strong proponent of building affordable housing. I am a strong proponent of various kinds of mixed neighborhoods. I moved back from Brooklyn, New York to Iowa City because of a desire for a sense of local community. And I am not interested in living in a neighborhood that continues to be unaffordable for a lot of people in this community, and I'm really concerned about the safety in the particular process of this zoning. My sister was almost hit three different times while pregnant crossing Brown Street right there at North Dodge. I walk for all of my transportation, walk or bike by choice, and it's part of why I love living in that neighborhood and working downtown, that I'm able to commute by foot. And I, too, have at least five times, like, narrowly avoided being hit there. I have chosen to walk some of the kids across the street there to help them get safely there. I'm really concerned about some of the processes that haven't been followed here for the rezoning, and my concern is not with increased affordable housing, but my concern is with making sure that there are sidewalks for kids, for those of us who live in the neighborhood, and especially in terms of folks needing access to the sidewalks for disability. It's becoming increasingly hard to do so because of some of the traffic issues there that I think haven't been addressed and could be addressed in order to make, make a good proposal for affordable housing there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure you're gonna sign in, thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else would like to address this matter? And also the developer, if you would like, a representative of the developer, if you'd like to say something, you can. It seemed like none here online, so, yes, council discussion.
I can start?
Yes.
I think that the reason to speak directly why we're back here is because the denied application from 2018 that I personally very much liked went to the Supreme Court of the state of Iowa, and they said, no, 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 Iowa City, you can't do that. You can't deny somebody's development rights based on, along history. So that's why we're back here. And because of that Supreme Court case, there are buildings, lots that are zoned R3B zoning, and those are a 1970s areas, Arizona zoning, that I really think we need to make them sunset and go away as quickly as possible because we don't have any controls, I shouldn't say no controls, but very limited control on what we can permit or not permit on those sites. And I think that the things that could be developed there would be very, very bad and completely contradictory to our comprehensive plan, as I understand it, we wouldn't have to follow any of the rules of our comprehensive plan because of the Supreme Court case. So that's why there's an effort to sort of combine these really weird R3B zones with the existing plan. And then we have to somehow mash that up with a comprehensive plan that isn't perfectly compatible with that. And the, the sort of central district plan, page 60, does identify low to medium density multifamily housing in that area. There is an additional lot that was not identified as that, so that is, that is a change, but that is listed as being eight to 24 units per acre. So that's how they got there. I, I'm not gonna comment on the, the look of the building or anything. I know in the ensuing week from the last time we talked about this, I've talked to a lot of people, including people who came to the listing post, there, there's a lot of people who don't necessarily love this proposal, but, and they were kind of curious about the comments that I was making about sidewalks. I was kind of obsessive about sidewalks last week. And that's because our comprehensive plan does talk about sidewalks over and over and over again. It shows up 36 times in our comprehensive plan. The site that's before us has a sidewalk on it, and the memo that's in the city council packet that was written by the assistant city, or city manager indicates that's really our city responsibility to direct staff to say, put in the connecting sidewalks and study the crossing across the street, which I would like to ask my fellow counselors to say, let's direct our staff to do that. But that's, that's where we're at, where we're at. And I do want to get rid of the R3B zoning. I do think that the density is, when you merge it with this R3B zoning and our comprehensive plan, it, it, it makes enough sense. So I will vote yes, but I also would like council support to do some city investigation into how we can improve pedestrian access and safety at that new site. Additionally, a point to the memo that was provided by staff that indicates that the way that you enter and exit, the traffic safety component is something that can be done that's non-substantive during the OPD development process. I would ask that they work on that, to improve that. But at this point, the, it seems as though those, those traffic safety issues as far as people turning the wrong way down a one-way can be resolved in the next phase of the process with the professional city staff. And the sidewalk is a thing that we can just, we as council can just say, we are doing this, we're gonna put in a sidewalk if the rest of the council agrees with that. I think that's a logical extension from our discussions and the memo to, you know, should this move forward, that, that also, and I think we kind of do that with our sidewalk infill anyway, I think that's, that's not unusual, so I agree with that, that that would be, you know, should this move forward, that should be the next thing we look at. But obviously, we have to wait for the actual plans and stuff, like, that's, you know, these pieces can move together, but that's not gonna be, you know, a next meeting kind of a thing, excuse me, kind of a thing.
I was gonna raise a lot of the same points that you did, Josh, just relating to this specific site and what has happened in the last decade. Well, really since 2018, when the Iowa Supreme Court said, we have to allow that R3B zoning if that's what the owner wants. And so just some differences between what's proposed and that. The buildings could have been 10 feet taller in the R3B zone. That zoning requires a lot more parking and therefore just more concrete on the site. We wouldn't have standards relating to the, kind of the massing of the buildings and the building materials. We couldn't impose those. So there are certainly trade-offs that we're making, and I, I think we're all trying to acknowledge that. And I just want to say to the residents, we are truly hearing you, appreciate the concerns about connectivity, about safety, about density, and taking all of that into account. For myself personally, I'm still gonna continue to support this, this rezoning. So I want you to know, it's not discounting your comments, it's not saying that, you know, a particular thing that was brought forward by a planning and zoning commissioner, you know, carries the day or is dispositive. It really is a complicated balancing act, and we know that, that you don't agree with that particular decision, but I just want to make sure you know that it does matter that you're here, it does matter that you're, you're speaking to us, and it does matter that there were numerous signatures on that protest petition, and that's reflected not only in our consideration of the comments here, the correspondence that's been provided, the meetings and phone calls that I know all of us have had with a variety of people, but also in the procedural aspects of requiring the supermajority. So I know it's unsatisfactory and very frustrating, but I just want to make sure to say affirmatively that, that I am listening, and I know we aren't agreeing on this particular issue, but please continue to engage your local government.
Also, we still have the mayor online and Megan, if you would like, just jump in, please.
Sure.
Go ahead, mayor.
All right, I'll just jump in, and I'll, I'll just say the comments that have already went before us, before us, yes, I do support, and say yay to all of that. And I'll just highlight, really, that the individuals that are coming to the meetings and all the ones that we've met with either personally or through communication, through email, I really appreciate all those voices there, and I don't want you to feel that it's being discounted. I think, you know, it's been said that this is a little convoluted and complicated, and I'll, I will be supporting this, but I just did not want you to feel like your voices have not been heard.
Counsel Alter?
Thank you. I echo what my fellow counselors have said, and in particular, I do want to thank the north side neighbors who have worked incredibly hard to make your voices heard, and I do echo what Counsel Berger said in particular, that we are disagreeing in this particular, but it is by no means because of simply discounting your voices. Additionally, I want to heartily support what Counselor Mo said in terms of saying, as counsel, when we are through with rezoning, then we can work on connectivity and safer sidewalk, like, getting a sidewalk and, and look into more robust public safety measures. I am 100% for that. I am supporting this. Someone did say that, you know, this decision will impact the north side for years to come, and I do say this without irony and all sincerity, I hope that it does. I hope that many more families and people will be able to call the north side neighborhood their home as well in years to come. And I just want to say that that's something that I am, it's a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood, and I think that more people deserve to be able to enjoy it and, and to enjoy it safely. So I am voting yes for this, and I am heartily supporting that we look into measures to get connectivity for pedestrians and safety for all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's well said, and I don't want to, like, stretch things out by repeating all the things that have been said, but things are good comments. I mentioned earlier the sidewalks, but thank you, Counselor Alter, for bringing up the public safety, because I think that isn't, that is something we talked about a little bit last time, if there, there are issues with the excessive speed, and again, you know, you can find that on many stretches in Iowa City, because, let's just face it, not every driver is, is cut from the same cloth. But, you know, certainly whatever those public safety measures look like, if it means some increased traffic enforcement and a few more tickets to remind people they need to slow down there, so be it. If, I know we do have that flashing sign that's coming down the hill there, reminding people of what their speed is. I don't want to second guess what the solution is, but I think paying close attention to that as we do these different modifications and look at the pedestrian traffic are going to be really important. So, because this is, you know, we do want this to be a pedestrian and bike-friendly community.
So, you know, I will say that this, as I expressed in the last time I, or last city council meeting during the first consideration, that this has been extremely frustrating for me, and I'm pretty sure the rest of the counselors, and I'm pretty sure for the staff, but I feel like, for me, it's just been kind of like banging your head against a wall, trying to figure out how to, I, I wholeheartedly agree that I think that the city should be able to, or the community should be able to tell anybody that what we need is affordable housing in a certain area. I think that, well, let's just boil it down to very basics, I don't think housing should be a commodity. I think housing should not be something that's viewed, anyways, just to bring it back to reality, to more current matters now, but it is, we do not know what will be built here, even if the zoning goes through. The worst-case scenario for a lot of people, if the zoning goes through, is that exactly what is in the OPD will be, will be put there, and that is 84 units of just market-rate housing, whatever the developer wants to put there. I still find that preferable to not building any more housing, and that comes from somebody who is very skeptical and thinks that a lot of times, when talking about affordable housing, people put too much emphasis on supply and not enough emphasis on affordable aspects and other ways that we can keep rents reasonable. But it is part of the puzzle, even if I think it's overstated sometimes. And so the worst-case scenario is exactly what goes here. And the best-case scenario could be, again, we don't know who is going to end up developing this space. We don't know who is going to buy it, we don't know what their mission will be or anything like that. So my advice to people within the neighborhood would be to try to come up with solutions yourselves and have some agency about, reach out to folks, you know, land is for sale and something can be built there, and you don't necessarily have to wait for a, a government body to say what goes there, or for a developer to go there, you know, you can come together and get creative with it. And I will say, my main concerns, safety-wise, I'm fully in supportive of, fully supportive of directing staff to prioritize, like it says in the memo, prioritize a project for the design of the sidewalk on the east side of Happy Hollow. That provides people access to the park, it connects people to the rest of the sidewalk infrastructure that can lead downtown. I also really want to see, see something go there, because when you view, I really hear the concerns about the craziness of the traffic in that area. It's, it's real, even if you might not see it on paper. I have a friend who lives over there, and I visit them, and I'm always scared backing out because people can be flying down that hill. So my major concern, though, is with, like, pedestrian crossing, because people will probably want to be walking to Hy-Vee and stuff like that to go to the grocery store. And that's one of the main reasons why I think housing is so, this is such a prime location for housing, because it is infill, it is in a direct walking distance from, like, five grocery stores and elementary school. And all the data shows us that families that grow up in these types of neighborhoods have, especially the children, have better life outcomes. So as a north sider myself, I, you know, I want to share in the greatness that is the north side, you know, and I love it, and I don't want to see it be like a gated community. And I'm not saying that that is what is being, I'm not saying that is what is being said. And, because I know that there are concerns that are, are not NIMBYism, but it is, yeah. I think that's all I have to say. So for the second consideration, yes. I will be supporting it for the second consideration, yes.
Okay, my two are nice things. Okay, I really love to see this site to be developed, and, because it's been sitting there for a long time, so we need to see something happening there. I also understand the need of more housing, because that could, could drive the, you know, the, the, the market of the affordable housing. Because that could drive the, you know, the market of the affordable housing down. Maybe when we have more housing, maybe the rent will be less. Some people believe that. And maybe, I don't understand that. But I also understand that the problem with the court and the Supreme Court and everything, I got that. But I really believe every neighborhood have, should decide about what they want to see in their neighborhood. Not the government, not the elected official. If I see a lot of people came with a vote issues and they have concern, that's really concern me. Because I've been elected by those people. And I should listen to you. That's why anything come from the people and the people reject it, I believe I should reject it too. Because I want to see every neighborhood in Iowa City decide about what they want to see in their neighborhood. They are supposed to be the people who make decision about what should go in their neighborhood. That's why I, while I'm going to vote no for this, I encourage the council to still connect with the staff and try to give the star direction, at least to do some of the doable request by the residents of this neighborhood. I'm going to be voting no. Anyone else or I think roll call?
Harmsen, yes. Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
No.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes six to one. May I have motion to accept correspondence, please?
So move, Burgess?
Move by Burgess.
Second, Mo.
Second by Mo. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Abo, same sign. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we are now in the regular formal agenda. Ten A, FY20 security rate, public hearing, and order amending Title III, entitled finance, taxation and fee, Chapter IV, entitled schedule of fee, rate, charge, bond, fines and penalties. And this motion to pass and adopt. May I have a motion to pass and adopt?
So move, Burgess?
Second.
Move by Burgess, second by Mo. Public discussion? Council discussion? Roll call, please.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
I believe councillor Alter indicated she would be logging out after the last item.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Now, ten B, State CDBG-CV funding, resolution approving an application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for state CDBG-CV funds. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mo.
Move by Mo.
Second, Harmsen.
Second by Harmsen. And we have the staff, okay, from the NDC.
Hey, Erica Kubli with Neighborhood Services. This is a public meeting for the city's application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for state CDBG-CV funds in partnership with Shelter House for Shelter Operations. CDBG funds were originated through the 2020 CARES Act. Funds must be used to prevent, prepare for and/or respond to the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Since we're in 2025, we're really in the response portion of that requirement. The city has received funds, four allocations of funds in the past since 2020, either directly from HUD or through the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Over $2 million in total. We've used those for emergency housing assistance, so for rent for people who are impacted by the pandemic, aid to nonprofits who are serving people impacted by the pandemic, a business assistance program, and emergency shelter improvements, most recently. So I'm going to go through some of the requirements for the application to the state. So the description of the project, the CDBG-CV funding will be used for emergency shelter operations. This would be things like staff costs, utilities, maintenance, insurance. They cannot use the funds for rehab or construction activities. Funding was made available to Iowa shelters selected by the Iowa Economic Development Authority. So locally, it's a shelter house, emergency shelter. We are anticipating an award of $301,500, with $300,000 going to Shelter House for their operations, and then $1,500 of administrative or activity delivery funds to the city. We also anticipate trying to shift some of our existing admin funds from prior projects to this one, just to cover the full staff cost of this project. We expect all funds to serve low to moderate income activities. This is CDBG rules. So everything has to be under 80% of the area median income. However, we expect that all those served by this project will be extremely low income, under 30% of the area median income. Shelter House is projecting 400 individuals will be assisted by this project. All their clients are referred through the local coordinated entry process. Location of the project activities is 429 South Gate Avenue in Iowa City. It's a 70-bed emergency shelter. And no relocation or displacement will take place as a result of this project. So we're discussing the need for the project and also tying it to COVID to relate it to the funds. We know that housing is a leading and social determinant of health. This was highlighted especially during the pandemic. Emergency shelter provides a safe temporary living environment where clients can get their daily needs met as they pursue stable housing. We also know that economic hardship and housing insecurity has increased since the pandemic. Housing costs have increased. And Shelter House also reports a deficit of $723,407 for their emergency shelter operating budget for this year. That's an updated dollar amount from the agency from your packet. So the CDBG-CV funds will allow the agency to continue provision of services in our community. So again, this is a public meeting. It's an opportunity for members of the public to provide input on the activity and the community need. If they desire some of the questions on our application, what are the needs of low to moderate income persons in Iowa City related to this project, access to safe, affordable housing, and access to services, including shelter and other basic needs? And then what are the planned or potential activities to address these specific needs? Our planned shelter operations project will address the need for shelter and related housing services for individuals in our community experiencing homelessness. It's a low barrier shelter, prioritizing those with the highest needs. And then funding will continue the operations. So other community development and housing needs in Iowa City, this is another question on the application. I've listed here our top priorities in our city steps 2030 consolidated plan that was approved by council in January. Expansion and preservation of affordable housing, provision of public services and public facility improvements. And so I listed down below some planned activities or ongoing activities that address these needs. This isn't a comprehensive list, but just a few to answer the question. So our federally funded activities, we have ARPA Housing Stability Pilot Project. We have CDBG funding rounds. Home art activities, we're working with Iowa Legal Aid for Eviction Prevention. We're doing supportive services. And we've funded the DVIP new construction at their shelter. We also have our Housing Choice voucher and public housing ongoing programs. And then we've recently started a home tenant-based rent assistance program. Locally funded, we have our aid agencies program. City's providing funding for street outreach and the winter shelter. We have our security deposit assistance program, and then also landlord risk mitigation program. Next steps for our application. So we did a public notice for the application in the Press Citizen on May 13th in compliance with the application rules. Our full application is due to the state on June 1st. And then funds would be available once we're awarded and must be expended by May 2026. So this is a pretty short-term project. So all the funds will be expended within a year. And then if there's any questions or communication regarding the project, my contact information is listed here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question to our staff for the council? Okay, now we're going to open the public discussion. Anyone like to address this matter? See the shelter house here, do you want to say something? Yeah, come over.
Thank you. Chrissy Kinganelli, Executive Director of Shelter House. And I hope that you will unanimously vote to approve this request. This funding will be very impactful and extremely helpful at this time, as city staff have shared. We have a deficit of over $700,000 in our emergency shelter operations. That is exclusively shelter operations and the direct costs of operating emergency shelter. Last year, we did implement a new staffing structure to ensure that our spaces are better supported, our staff are better supported, our clients are better supported. We have shift supervisors on second and third shift now with two people per shift in emergency shelter. We did not have these staff ratios in the past, especially with the onsite shift supervisors. These were adjustments that were necessary and should have happened probably going back to 2018 when we implemented a low barrier approach to emergency shelter. So these increased costs will be ongoing for us. We do think that they are essential to being able to provide safe shelter for the very complex needs of our clientele. I think that there was an additional laid handout that was shared that indicates the highly complex nature of the population, high incidence of chronic homelessness. In Johnson County, we're second out of the most populous counties in the state of Iowa for the occurrence of chronic homelessness. So we have a very vulnerable population that we're working with. So thank you very much for consideration.
Thank you. Okay, council discussion. I guess things, the need is really great. And losing 700K, oh my God, that's a lot money to have. And I think then it's really great. And we need to keep what we have operating if we can.
Yes, thank you. Thank you also for doing all the work to get this grant all lined up.
It owes to it all.
I'm happy to sign a piece of paper and to give homeless services $300,000, so. I'd also like to take this time to, for the second time this evening, call out the city of Coralville for only giving, only giving Shelter House 10K. And Iowa City gives an extremely larger amount. Same thing with North Liberty. I would like to take this opportunity to say, the reason that you don't see as many homeless people in the city of Coralville or North Liberty is because they come to Iowa City. It's because y'all's police, I don't know where the camera is, y'all's police drops them off at Shelter House. It does not mean it's not your problem. So this is a problem for the entire county. And people should pitch in equally, proportionately. 10K is not proportionate, right? We see an increasing homelessness in our communities all across the country, but in Johnson County too. So I would just like to please say, there's levies that you can use, that you haven't used. So anyways, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Any other comment? Okay, roll call, please.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion passes six, zero. All right. Item number 10C, tobacco civil penalty and permit suspension. Cases general restore number 2761. Okay, resolution assisting 15, 1,500 civil penalty and 30 days retail cigarette permit suspension against cases generally store number 2761. Now we can go with the staff comment, please.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can begin before Sergeant Matt Tice, and I'll invite you to come to the podium, if you would, for a moment, so you can talk a little bit about the compliance checks and how they work and the individual circumstances of each of these cases. I say each of these cases because as councils are aware, there are a number of these items following this one on your agenda. So council's role tonight is to decide whether or not a violation has taken place. I believe Sergeant Tice will be explaining that, that the employees in each of these instances have pled guilty to the criminal charge. And we have considered that sufficient in the past. And then to impose the penalty, the penalty I would note is set by state code. So it is not something that council can alter one way or the other. And the language from the state code says shall assess. And so if you feel that a violation has taken place, but you would really like to not impose the penalty for whatever reason, unfortunately, under the state code, that is not something that's available to you. With that, I'll turn it over to Sergeant Tice.
Good evening. My name is Matt Tice. I'm a sergeant with the Iowa City Police Department. And I oversee the tobacco compliance checks. A little background, the city has a 28E agreement with the Iowa Department of Revenue to perform the tobacco compliance checks. These checks are done once a year on businesses that have the tobacco permits. If a business fails, there is a recheck done on those businesses. How the actual compliance check works is that we use a helper who is under the age of 21. They work with the police department to conduct these checks. The underage person, they're only allowed to take their real ID and whatever money we give them. There is a no deceit involved in this. So if they are asked how old they are, they will tell them, you know, exactly how old they are. If they're asked for their ID, they will give them their ID. If they are asked if they are old enough to purchase this, they are to answer truthfully that they are not. There is absolutely no deceit in this at all. When these checks are being done, the helper is sent into a business and they will attempt to purchase any tobacco, nicotine or vapor products. And this is audio and video recorded and monitored by police. If a business sells to this minor, the minor will purchase it, come out to the police, we will speak with them. And then the police will go in and talk with the employee and issue a citation for an employee providing tobacco products, vapor cigarettes to a person under the age of 21. And then in this instance, these businesses that are on here that had failed, all the employees have already pled guilty to those citations.
Any question?
If I remember correctly from our cratum discussions, the state actually sponsors the costs of doing these. Is that, is that how that works financially? Like there's some, do you remember?
You're asking if they're reimbursed for doing the checks essentially?
Yeah, are you aware, is this reimbursed through the state?
Yeah, it's part of that agreement.
Part of the 28E agreement. So the overtime cost, if an officer incurs overtime and then the payment to the helper is covered?
Yeah, I can't remember the exact amount, but it's per check that you get reimbursed.
Per check, okay. So per compliance check is?
And so you, we just do as many of these as we have the funding to do them? Is that kind of the way it works? Or is it required to go to every single place once a year or something?
For tobacco, it is every single place that has a permit to sell those.
Once a year?
And so, yep, once a year. But part of that is if they do fail, then we have to do a recheck on those businesses.
Any other question?
Did you say that it is whoever is the one to sell, like the employee, those are the ones that are charged criminally?
Yeah, so they will receive the citation, the employee that actually sells it to a minor.
Okay, the employee and it, after what? Is it a couple of times, then it will turn into something that is, the store itself has to pay? I'm sorry, I'm.
Oh, no, the, well, there's two different things. There's the criminal penalty, to which Sergeant Tice has talked about, the criminal charge for the actual employee who provided or sold a tobacco product to the minor. That's the criminal side of it. What you have before you tonight on all of these is the civil penalties that are imposed on the peremptee, that is, the business. Does that answer your question?
Yes, that's clarifying. I was also wondering what type of criminal penalty it is.
So it's a citation, it's?
For the employee, like?
Yeah, I'm sorry, are you asking for what the fine is?
No, what the like level of criminal penalty is it? Is it like?
Oh, it's a simple misdemeanor, if that's what you're asking.
Simple misdemeanor, okay.
Yes.
And you say that we don't have the authority to say no, is that correct? That we, or we don't have the authority to say we don't want them to pay the civil penalty, right?
If you conclude that a violation has taken place, then you are compelled to impose the penalty called for by state code.
But what we have before us, like you said, is the civil penalty on the business and nothing on the individual?
That, yes, that's correct. Everything you're talking about tonight is imposed on the business, not on the employee.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I really want to talk about the employee. Normally, the store will give them clear directions. Normally, the store will give them clear directions that they don't have to sell to minor. That's normally happen or because, I don't know if the employees know and they did it or because since they're gonna have like simple misdemeanor in their record.
One would assume that all of, that that would be a very important part of the training for any employee who is selling tobacco products, much like alcohol products, that they need to be trained, that you need to identify and make sure that they're at least 21 years of age to purchase.
Sure. Any other question? And I don't see the permittee here, so I think we skipped that. And I would like to have a motion to approve.
So, move, Mo.
Okay, move by Mo.
Is this just for the first one or we do, can we do all of them at once?
Well, we have to give the, this is just the first one, sorry. We have to give the permittee a chance, man, I appreciate that. I see no one here, but...
Got it.
The subsequent ones will be quicker.
10C only.
10C, thank you.
Do we zoom to the second?
After I missed the second.
I'm waiting for a second.
A second.
Okay, Harmsen, second by Harmsen, council discussion. Roll call please.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, 10D, tobacco civil penalty, essential vape and smoke shop. Resolution assisting $300 civil penalty against essential vape and smoke shop. May I have a, no, now we have, do we have to do the stuff again?
Right, I obviously won't give the procedural aspects again, but I will ask Sergeant Tice to come forth to at least confirm that the employee in question has pled, or either been found guilty or pled guilty to the criminal charge.
Yeah, so similar, the employee for here has also pled guilty to this.
Sure. Okay, any question? And the permittee is not here. Now we consider the resolution, may I have a motion?
So move Burgess.
Move by Burgess.
Second, Mo.
Second by Mo. Council discussion. Roll call please.
Y-line.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 10A, tobacco civil penalty, hackai, smoke, and liquor. Resolution assisting $300 civil penalty against hackai, smoke, and liquor. Also, now for the staff.
This employee has also pled guilty.
Okay, and also the permittee is not here. May I have a motion to consider the resolution, please?
So move Burgess.
Second, Mo.
Burgess, second by Mo. Council discussion. Roll call please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Item, motion passes six to zero. Item 10F, tobacco civil penalty, the Crown liquor. Resolution assisting $300 civil penalty against the Crown liquor. Also the staff, if you wanna...
The staff has pled guilty.
All right, and the permittee is not here. Consider resolution by, can I have a motion?
So move, Mo.
Move by Mo.
Second, Harmsen.
Second by Harmsen, discussion, council. Okay, roll call please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 10G, tobacco civil penalty, the smoke outlet tobacco and vape shop. Resolution assisting $300 civil penalty against the smoke outlet tobacco and vape shop. May I have, okay, for this, the Crown.
Yes, the employee has pled guilty.
Sure, and the permittee also is not here. Consider resolution, can I have a motion to approve?
So move Burgess.
Second, Y-line.
Yes, second by Y-line, discussion. Okay, roll call please.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Thank you to the staff, yeah, thank you, Sergeant. Okay, now item number 11, council appointment. And we have the airport commission. Airport commission, one vacance to fill a four-year's term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2029. And we have also, do we accept the correspondence right now or later?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed your question.
No, I get it, thank you, council discussion. Yeah, thank you.
Our applicant has a letter of recommendation?
I think we should appoint Chris Lawrence. Yes.
I would get that.
He said something in like an email that technically you're not allowed to, or it's not usually permissible to have more than two terms, but is that something that we can waive or...
I have the rule before me, it's from the council rules, Rule 36. It says, except in unusual circumstances, an individual should be limited to one reappointment to a full term in order to increase the opportunities for new applicants to serve. So, except in unusual circumstances, so that's up to council's discretion.
There's one applicant.
There's one.
That's unusual.
Yeah, no one else is applying.
Actually, it's unusual for us.
I think we should move, we always get...
Okay. Yep.
Okay, may I have a motion? Top point.
I'll, I think we did this, but I'm...
You did? I think I just said I recommend we do.
Okay, sure, I'll move, I'll move the Chris Lawrence. Reappointed. Reappointed, yes, to the airport commission.
Move by Mo.
Second.
Second by Y-line. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Above same sign.
Move to a subcore exponent.
Motion passes six to zero. And now can I have a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Burgess and second by Y-line. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Above same sign, motion passes six to zero. Community police review board. Community police review board, two vacance to fill four-years' term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2029. Council discussion.
Was this Melissa's first or second term that she's finishing up?
She been before, I think.
Melissa Jensen.
Melissa Jensen.
Yeah, I think it's her.
She has been before, I don't know if she had a gap in between.
Yeah, she have a gap in between, she served with me. She's awesome and amazing, so she served with me long time ago when I was in the...
Channeling Bruce.
Yeah.
I'd be okay with, with Melissa.
If you say she's awesome and amazing, then let's go.
I'm stealing that from you, Maya.
I love it.
So like...
Sorry, I was gonna say I liked Audrey.
Yep, that's what I was gonna say, Audrey Mueller. Yeah, okay, yeah, I guess so.
Let me check that, attorney? Yeah, but claims counsel, I know that in the past, we've had some question about defense attorneys, but this is not a criminal practice, so that would not be a concern.
If I understand her position correctly, she works for a title insurance company, so I cannot, real estate title, sorry.
Right.
So I can't imagine any conflicts here.
Excellent, yeah. It's fine with me. Do we have a formal recommendation for those two, or do we need?
I move to appoint Melissa Jensen and Audrey Mueller to the community police review board.
Second.
Second.
By Burgess, second by Harmsen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Above same sign, motion passes six to zero.
Can I, just real quickly, just, just want to toss out there, possibly throwing the future of what the CPRB looks like in our city ordinance onto a future work session. I don't have a specific date in mind, but I think with, and I don't know if the governor's yet signed. She has?
She has, yeah, signed last night.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yes, if you're talking about Senate File 311, yes.
Unfortunately, yes.
She signed it last night, which bans boards and, local boards and commissions that basically review police behavior, if you will.
Is the effective date July 1?
It is not, it's August 16th, which is a rather unusual date. I'm not sure how they came up with that, but it's August 16th.
Yes, so I mean, if we could get that onto a work session, at some point, giving us plenty of, you know, over the summer, would be.
And I think, from my nine years serving on the telecommunications commission, that commission had its authority to do most of what it was intended to do stripped in 2018, and then the commission eventually recommended that it be disbanded after carrying out a few other activities. So, I don't know if we can ask the commissioners to consider sort of what the continuance of the commission should look like as far as they're concerned? That would be something I'd be interested in hearing.
Yep, you're reading my mind, I had thought about a joint like, you know, have, see if any of them want to come in for that work session, so.
Or maybe we can invite them to come in one of the work session, yeah. Okay, item 11C, historic preservation commission at large. Historic preservation commission at large, one vacance to fill a three-years' term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. Council discussion.
I'll just mention that Seth used to work with me and he no longer lives in Iowa City, so probably shouldn't be considered.
Thank you for that.
Fair enough.
It's only one.
Don't have a strong preference here. I didn't communicate with either of the remaining two applicants. I think that both of them have benefits. Construction is always helpful, so that would be awesome. But I don't have, I didn't do more than just read the application.
So, it looks like Jack is also, I liked Jack's application and I, it seems like he is applying for multiple, including the...
HCDC.
The HCDC, yeah, so it might make sense to appoint Austin so we can consider Jack for housing.
I'm good with Austin.
Okay.
Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved, Austin.
Second.
Move by Mo, second by Y-line, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any above, same sign. Motion passes six to zero. Item number 11D, historic preservation commission, Brown Street. It is one vacance to fill a three-years' term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. Council discussion.
I think we need to look for another applicant.
Does staff need direction from us on that?
Uh, wouldn't...
No, okay, great.
Leave it open, the, the single applicant doesn't live here, so I think we move on, yeah.
We move on, okay. 11E, housing and community development commission. Do we do anything when we move on or just move on like that?
I'm sorry, I'm struggling to keep up. On 11D, you don't want to appoint anyone, is that correct?
11D, 11D has one applicant who I don't think lives here anymore, so.
Okay, so you'd just like to repost, is that the will of council?
I think.
Yes. Yeah, we'll do that.
Do you want to have to do a motion for that or just repost?
No, that's enough, informally, it's fine, thank you.
And now we are in 11E, housing and community development commission, and I will leave that to our city attorney to speak about this.
Oh, right, thank you, Mayor Protam. So this one's a little complicated. So council may recall that there was a member removed at the last council meeting. There is an appeals process that lasts 30 days, so we don't want to appoint anyone tonight here in the, I guess, based on the possibility of that individual coming forth and appealing successfully. Then we would have one too many members. So, we're asking for a deferral to the June 17th meeting. That would be far enough out to be outside that 30-day appeal period. Also, it would then be after the June 3rd meeting at which the HCDC has put forth, or will be putting forth to council, a motion to change their bylaws that will reduce the number of their members from nine to seven.
Okay, then I would like to have a motion to defer the two vacance to fill unexpected term upon appointment June 30th, 2026.
Move.
To June 17th, is, I'm sorry.
To June 17.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, June 17, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved, Mo.
Move by Mo.
Second, Harmsen.
Second by Harmsen, all in favor, say aye.
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 Above same sign, motion passes six to zero. Item number 11F, housing and community development commission. Housing and community development commission, two vacance to fill three-years' term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. And see the position.
Same thing, right?
Same condition.
Yeah, the last motion, I'm sorry, Mayor Protam referred to both 11E and this item, 11F, so I think this one's already taken care of then.
Okay, we don't have to do it both of them, okay.
Thank you.
Then, thank you. Item 11G, library board and trustee. Library board and trustee, three vacance to fill six-years' term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2031st. And yes, council discussion.
I'll say that I've seen firsthand that Kelmia Strong is somebody who already kind of like runs a library type thing in, for Public Space One and, you know, not even just my shorter time on the Board of Public Space One, but just throughout the years of knowing her and what she does for the community and like the values that she holds specifically in a time when like libraries are unfortunately under a microscope and under attack. So I think someone like her, someone I know, has that type of dedication. That's why I really like the application from Kelmia. Yeah.
I think they had, I agree, they had a strong application. Two other applications that jumped out at me that, one of them, Kelsey Patrick Farre, and then the other one, Katie Prisky.
Yeah, I like Kelmia Strong and Kelsey Patrick Farre, those are on my list.
Okay.
We are seeking three.
Oh, there are three, right. Corey Schwiegel Skiers.
Look at that one again. I'm getting them mixed in my head.
Yeah, that three?
I just want to make sure that I'm thinking, not mixing up applicants here. Okay, yes, I did have Corey up here as favorable. And as well as Kelsey, okay, wow.
We need three, right?
So it would be...
Katie, Corey.
Kelmia.
Kelsey.
Kelsey and Corey.
Kelsey, not Katie.
Yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion to appoint Kelsey, Corey, and Kamala, yeah? The three.
So moved.
Move by Y-line, uh-huh, second.
Second.
Second by Burgess, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Above same sign. Okay, motion passes six to zero. May I have a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved, Burgess.
Move by Burgess.
I would also just like to thank all the applicants because I had a good time reading all the applications.
Yeah, they're good applications.
Yeah.
They are.
And it, and it was a tough choice in a lot of them, so, yeah.
Okay, I'm waiting for a second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second by Harmsen. I said, is that a second, you? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Abode, same sign. Motion basis six to zero. Item 11H, Planning and Zoning Commission. Two vacance to fill five years term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2030. Counsel discussion.
I'd like to put James Davies or David Davies, as he listed here, forward. He's applied in the past, communicated about planning and zoning issues, very familiar with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, David, or Davies, and also Caleb, who is currently on the HCDC, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. I see one of the ones coming off.
I don't think he is. I think he rolled off last summer. His application is, this one's about a year old.
I believe that's correct. I believe he's no longer on HDC.
Yeah.
Okay, so someone with that experience, I think, would be valuable.
No problem with that.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll move James, or sorry, David Davies and Caleb Bining.
Okay, move by Mo. May I have a second?
Second, Burgess.
Second by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
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 Abode, same sign. Motion basis six to zero. And also vacance new. 12A, Police Review Board, one vacance to fill an unexpired term upon appointed June 30th, 2027. And do we accept correspondence or no? No. Okay. Human Rights Commission, one vacance to fill an unexpired term upon appointed December 31st, 2025. Application must receive by 5:00 PM Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. Motion to accept correspondence, please.
So moved.
Move by Y-line.
Second Mo.
Second by Mo. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion basis six to zero. And also vacance previous. 13A, Public Art Advisory Committee, one vacance to fill an expired term upon appointed December 31st, 2025. And application must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 10, 2025. Airport Zoning Board, an adjustment, one vacance to fill a five years term, January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2028. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacance to fill a six-year term, January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2029. Board of Avial, HVAC professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment, December 31st, 2028. Hostile Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacance to fill a three years term, July 1st, 2022, 2022 to June 30th, 2025. Hostile Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacance to fill a three years term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. Hostile Preservation Commission, Summit Street, one vacance to fill a three years term, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028. Hostile Preservation Commission, Woodlong Avenue, one vacance to fill a three years term, July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2027. Vacants will be remain open until filled. City Council Informations. And now we, yes, council member, if you would like to report in any, like, brief meeting, attending or commission?
Counselor Harmson and I went to the landfill and did a listening post there. It was a wonderful day. Thanks to the Public Works for throwing a fun event. So I actually don't know what next year would be for where the next event would be.
The next Public Works Open House. We haven't decided on next year's location yet.
I look forward to it every year, so I gotta admit, water treatment is my favorite, but, but no, I will, my intention is to type up the notes that we had and issue them in a memo to council for the next IP. Some of them included some rather complicated technical questions, so I'm trying to get answers with the professional staff. So we have answers, not just a list of questions. Also, to, actually, this is a, do we want to merge this with our work session item of commissions and boards? We didn't get to that. Seats met today. So, and just, they continue to seek efficiencies, and they are actually seeing some increases due to some new software of being able to have less time per rider and still provide good service, so there's some good news there. Since you already kind of led off of that, thank you to all the people that came out and looked at the new building out at the landfill. It looks nice. Speaking of efficiencies, one of the reasons why that is there is because the former building was literally had gaping holes, was too small for some of the equipment, which meant equipment was left out in the weather year-round. Couldn't be worked on in some cases, had to be shipped to other places in order to have a garage big enough to work on it with some of the bigger tractors and, and things like that, which now will be able to be done on-site, which will, which will have some long-term benefits, as well as some, some much-needed upgrades to the spaces for the employees. So that all looked really good. Other board and commission, UNESCO City of Literature, is doing, also looking at efficiencies, realizing the difficult place of many of our organizations here because of the change of administration, is doing a lot to make up the difference and keep that organization vital. And kudos to John Kenyon and other members of the board who put a lot of time and effort into making sure that that's gonna happen.
Anyone else do want to report about our Rules Committee?
Oh, Rules Committee.
Oh, yeah, we had a nice short meeting with the Rules Committee. We touched on it a little bit for the appointments to the commissions, the rule change lowering the number of people on the HCDC. And it was approved, and the logic was sound.
Sure, counsel Burgess.
I don't, I think the only thing I would mention is we do have an MPOJC meeting tomorrow, but I am intending to miss that to attend the Iowa City Downtown District's annual event, which is at our senior center from 4:00 to 6:00, I believe.
Yes.
And when I looked yesterday, there were still tickets available.
Can we have five staff members go instead of us? Or, I don't know.
Alternates are available. I will already be attending as one alternate. I assume we can rally up some troops. We can see, we can do what we can do, yes.
Yeah, I didn't realize, I didn't think about this being an option. You let the genie out of the bottle, so.
I just never miss the MPO, so I figured I can miss one, but.
I'll miss one in a while.
Yeah.
Oh, should we write you an email?
Sorry, saying what?
Should we write an email to the city manager saying if alternates are available or?
Oh, yeah, that sounds good.
Get appropriate-
If you, if you would like an alternate, just raise your hand here. How about we do this?
I already arrange one.
Okay, we need five alternates and-
Is it acceptable to have all of us at the State of Downtown?
Are you going, do you need an alternate, mayor? No, mayor's not going, sorry, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of trust, that's all I'm saying.
But also, the mayor, if you want to report in any event or commission, just like young man.
Yeah, again, it's graduation season, so congrats to all the graduates from the University of Iowa, as well as to Kirkwood Community College, have attended some of those graduations. But I, and I was also at the Public Works Open House, so I, of course, saw our counselors there. Man on the table with definitely a lot of community input, so that's always great to see. It was a great event and agree with all of the comments about the need, as well as the great work of our Public Works Department. Other than that, I'll leave it at that. And sorry, as many of you know, I wasn't able to be there in person, but Mayor Protam, you're doing an awesome and amazing job.
Thank you, thank you. We understand. Okay, now, if no one else, I will move to item number 15, Staff Report, City Manager Office.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
City Attorney?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, City Clerk?
Nothing.
All right, we have last, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Move by Burgess.
Second.
Second by Y-line. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Abode, same sign. Motion basis six to zero.